Call the meeting to order at 4:05.
Are we about to record the meeting?
Mr. Ganda is recording the meeting for later publication on YouTube, I assume. And in addition to that, our recording secretary has a device and she is recording our meeting. Anybody else? I have no announcements. Is there anybody else? I don't think so.
There will be selectmen's listening session tomorrow evening, as I had announced a couple of weeks ago. Tomorrow at 5:30 at the library.
First item one is to go over our collective bargaining contract.
Okay, well, there really is, I'll just give you, we'll go through one at a time. The ones that are approved and all ready to be signed, sealed, and should be delivered are the firefighter contract, the full-time firefighter, and then the call firefighter contracts. We have one side, they've both been reviewed by the unions, they've both approved them. I noted that the call firefighters haven't signed theirs, but I am fully aware that they've reviewed them and they're in approval of them. So I am respectfully requesting the board's vote for a, to approve a consolidate, we'll start with the first one for the fire.
Regular fire?
Yes, respectfully request that the board would vote to approve and sign the consolidated contract between the town of Topsfield and the Topsfield Firefighters Local 3250, the International Association of Firefighters. This agreement is for fiscal years 2018 through 2020, and it will be in effect for July 1, 2017, through June 30 of 2020. It has been fully agreed to in an MOU that was approved by the board previously in April, in March 12th. And so this effectively takes the MOU, combines it with the previous contracts and MOU, and allows us to have one document that we would go to to determine the official employee agreement and collective bargaining between the town and our firefighters. So I respectfully ask the board's support to approve and sign this contract.
Have they signed it?
They have signed this one, yes. One member has, of the two that need to sign it. But they haven't reviewed both.
Make a motion to approve the town of Topsfield, a labor agreement between the town of Topsfield and the Topsfield Firefighters dated July 17, 2017 to June 2020. Second?
Second.
And then discussion?
At the March 12th meeting, when we approved the MOA, I expressed at length my concerns with some portions of this. And I feel the same way, very uncomfortable with the agreement. I don't think we should approve it this way. I don't think we're doing the right thing for the town, or actually for the employee group at the time. But I've expressed those things already.
Any other comments? Well, I'm ready to sign it. We've been through that. We've been through item by item over and over again. As long as I can understand that you've effectively added the memory of understanding into that contract, I'm willing to move forward with it. I'm ready. Mark, can you comment?
No.
Then I will entertain a vote to approve the employment agreement.
Aye.
And I will die.
I vote aye.
Next item is, what, call firefighter?
The call firefighters, correct. And their MOU or MOA was approved by the Board of Selectmen on March 14th. We have consolidated their former contract that was for FY 15 through 17 with the MOU and have now come up with the signed memorandum of agreement and collective bargaining contract between the town of Topsfield and the Call Firefighters Association. This will be good for FY 18 through 20. And I respectfully request the board's approval and signature of the consolidated contract.
Make a motion that we approve the agreement, employment agreement between the town of Topsfield and the Topsfield Call Firefighters Association.
Second.
Any discussion?
Similar, as I said in the past, relative to this contract, the full firefighter's contract, that there are concerns about the additions that have been put in, the application of a grid with a number of different steps. I expressed concerns with that in the past, as well as the additional money that we're putting forward for evening shift. Again, I feel uncomfortable and I think it's a mistake for the town to be doing this. I made other suggestions as to how we might do it during our executive sessions. So at this point, I don't feel very comfortable and I would suggest that we not approve this.
Well, I'm of the same opinion as I was on the first one. I'm ready to move forward with it. We've been through it all. We've discussed it. I know that Dick has voiced his displeasure with it or unacceptance over the past, but I don't think that that was the census of the board. So I would devote it, I would, I'm ready to sign it. And I would make, I would make one further comment. I will sign it on the condition that we get this issue signed by the call firefighter.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Oh, no, this is definitely, this is already, the MOU was executed. We're just voting to sign the consolidation. This won't be fully executed until it has
All the signatures.
All the signatures that are necessary. And even if the board today votes, there's three members. We have a quorum. If it votes in favor, you can sign off on this. If not, we still have an MOA that is in existence and is legally binding. This really just is an administrative and legal mechanism for us to not be confused about various agreements floating around.
Any other comments? Then I will entertain a vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Oh, just, you're just going to say?
Well, I just wanted to see what I'm signing here.
Right on the front page.
It is the call firefighter, it's fine. Next item, Kelly?
The next one, I wanted to give you an update. I'm perfectly willing to abide by the will of the board. We can postpone this if you so choose. I had, I had given this copy of this agreement to the police union and their representative on Friday when I touched base with their representative today. She said she still hadn't received it back, that they were still reviewing it. So I, as of this moment, don't have their full agreement, that they may have some final changes. So we can either postpone it, or we could vote to sign, assuming that they would also be voting to sign without any further changes, or we can simply wait till Tuesday's meeting and I can update the board as soon as I hear back from them. So it's inconsequential to me. I just wanted to be able to wrap up these contracts and have them be ready for you. I just, at this point, haven't heard back from the union with a definite, you know, just to, they may have some minor changes, I'm not sure. At this point, I have no indication that they've made changes, but we don't have it in hand with us.
Well, I'll make a motion and then we can have some discussion about it. Discussion and vote to approve the town clerk's official public records access guidelines.
Oh, wait, one, one, we're still on the contracts.
Where, is this actually?
No, this is police.
Our police? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're going to make a motion, but the question is essentially at hand. We're waiting for them to come back for sure. It would seem to me it's appropriate, and Kelly says there's no option.
I don't think there's any question.
There had not been.
If they haven't come back.
The MOU has, yeah.
That's fine.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah.
If they haven't approved it, then we ought to.
Okay, so I'm going to, I may, because we need to post our meet, we've already posted a meeting for Tuesday. What I may do is post this. If I don't hear back from them by Tuesday's meeting, then I will just take that off of the agenda. But in the essence, again, it's really just the timing of it and just trying to get everything wrapped up. So I'll put it on the agenda just in case we do hear back and we don't have to hold up the process anymore, but I will follow up.
Can I ask you, somewhat related, just talking about posting. If it isn't already, can you post something that would allow us to review in a few minutes just in case one sneaks in between? I know it's essentially a joint meeting with the FinCom, but I think we can do that.
That's perfectly allowable.
Could we hold our meeting before the joint meetings, company could take care of our business?
Yeah, but I think before or after within a, I think it's a, I think it's a posted meeting.
My suggestion is if we're going to post it in timing, what it shows it would be after. So we get that business done, which we have to get done. And then if somebody's running late, we're not waiting for them to arrive.
Yeah, that's good, I knew.
For.
We'll just post the meeting, we'll add these items after the other business that is evolving in the FinCom.
Okay.
And finally, just one final update. The contract for the Ask Me Group, I spent quite some time working on a preliminary first draft. Not as clear-cut as I originally thought, although it's certainly something that we can work through. But I believe that I'm going to need a little bit more time. I didn't want to rush it for the sake of the timing. There are some questions, more semantics, more housekeeping issues than.
Substance?
Right. But there's a lot of, it's not easily aligned.
It's significant because you're bringing two together. This isn't different because you're not updating and existing when you're taking two separate ones and bringing them together, together with the MOA pieces.
Interesting.
I can believe that there's a significant amount that needs to be done.
And I didn't want to, in the name of efficiency or, you know, expediting the process, to port ourselves, bring ourselves into a corner whereby we are giving up the town's ability and legal right to negotiate or at least come to mutual agreement on terms that might have been approved for one unit, but not for the other. So just because they're being combined into one, we had to be really careful.
And we're asking them to make some fairly significant changes to their thought process, too.
I mean, to have two, instead of two unions, one union?
Well, yeah, I mean, but we're also asking them to go to bi-weekly payroll and.
That was the easy part, because they both have agreements, they both have it in their new MOAs. The difficult part was the difference between, okay, one, one unit says that they get jury duty pay and the other unit doesn't have that. Now, I know the personnel rules and regs, and everybody gets it. So I need some time to make sure that whatever they put in there, I'm not going to agree to it for the other group, or to ask them. Why don't we take it out and just fall back on the personnel rules?
That's negotiation back and forth.
Sure, sure.
It's more of a housekeeping, but we need a little more time and I don't want to rush through it. I spoke with the Ask Me rep, he's more than willing to come in. I explained to them the fact that we have the MOUs in place is really that, that was the piece we were missing. I had hoped to get a little further along. But we don't see any reason in trying to rush anything through. We're just going to make sure that we do it the right way. So we'll leave the MOA in place. We won't have a consolidated contract. My, my goal would be to get a consolidated contract in place and signed off before the end of this fiscal year, so that going into the new fiscal year, there's no confusion about what is or isn't in the consolidated contract.
That's it for item one?
That's it for that, yeah.
Now I can talk about item two.
Yes.
You want to talk about your public records guidelines?
I was going to ask the town clerk if she could participate in this process, if you feel that there might be questions. But that's certainly up to the board. If you wanted me to, it would be that she is available. I'm happy to go. Do you mind, David? Thank you.
Thanks, David. Well, what I'm going to do is I'll read the item. Discussion and vote to approve the town clerk's official public records access guidelines to be published on the town's website to publicize the process and procedures for public records requests in the town of Topsfield. Second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
So again, this was something that we had come up at a meeting, we didn't complete it. Making changes and summarily stopped. Because I got it because it was going on, there was always a number of changes to, beyond that to be made. And so now this is back with some of the things, well, hopefully all the things we discussed at that point, but not all the things that were intended to be discussed. Unfortunately, I did not get back to this version since Monday, which I hoped I might do. When was that? I think it was the 12th, right? March 12th, have we discussed this? I'm not sure.
I believe it was the 12th.
So I, I still have the comments, I don't have them in front of me now, of suggested changes or improvements as they're laid out here. I realize that this is a relatively boilerplate game from town council, but that doesn't always, couldn't be appropriate to improve it, so to speak. So in a sense, if it's, I think we'd like to get it done, but as we said before, delay it, I think we, I think delay it, we're going to have a reorganized board in a week, so this week, a week and a half. With the new board as a whole, we only have three of us here. This is a statement of something that is apparently a lot of discussion about RAO and what it does and how it interfaces with the public. I think it's appropriate to wait.
You've seen this? You've read this?
Mm-hmm.
Your comments?
This is something that was mandated by the public records law that all towns put together and put on the website. It was supposed to be on the website last July. This is the version put together by KP Law. And we went through it and inserted the correct Topsfield information. And it's something that should be on the website and it's boilerplate and it's, you know, it is boilerplate and it's something that, you know, should be on the website now. And it's really, I think it was really intended to just come in front of the board as an acknowledgement that we were doing it, not necessarily something the board was supposed to really act on, had to really act on, from my understanding. Most other clerks, I don't even think, took it to their boards. I think most clerks put it on the website and it's.
And you've talked to other clerks about this?
Yeah, yeah. As far as I know, no other clerks have had to have it.
We're going to prove this as a version one, but I would ask that we put this on a meeting agenda coming up in June, we'll say, give us, give people a chance to person whoever it is, whatever it is, to come on board.
Are you questioning who the RAO is? Because I believe that was something that was established way back when.
No, 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 no.
And that was, was that established by the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what?
Well, the conditions and how they're expressed in here and the rules and regs, there's some, I don't remember the details, because it was a month and a half ago. But there are some things in here that should be, shall I again say, approved, improved. But that's, we can certainly go along with this.
This was provided by our legal counsel.
That, that has some weight.
And I would, they put it together based on the law, their study of the law, and it was put together by our legal counsel and.
As far as.
You know, we already made changes to it, though, right?
I understand, we made a few formative changes that you recommended, fine. But as, you know.
We did incorporate those.
Right, we did incorporate those.
Town council has stated that until we get this on the website, we're out of compliance, right? Number one concern right now is that we get it posted and if the board has further feedback, we can bring that up at a future meeting.
I would ask that we just now indicate that we'll also review this version one at a meeting and pick the first June meeting or something like that?
Well, you can call it what you want. I'm not in favor of the version one idea, but we're going to approve this. And if the new board wants to take it up as a point of discussion at one of their meetings, let it move forward, okay? If the new board decides not to do it, then that's their business.
Let's move on.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oh, we need a second? We got one? Okay. Then no other discussion, I would entertain a vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
Melissa? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could get that posted at the board. In all your copious free time.
You can put in for an hour's overtime.
She's hourly. I have that on record. She's hourly. She doesn't get overtime.
I know she's. Item number three. Any discussion about annual or special town meeting that needs to be brought up at this point in time?
Does it suppose the exact time of the joint meeting?
Six o'clock.
And that's in the part that teaches lunch?
Correct.
Yes.
So do we have the, at this point, the transfers?
I don't have them. I can get them to you by Friday morning. It's a short list. I can, I started to recite the list the other night. The only other new item that I'm aware of is $405 to rent chairs for town meeting. To my knowledge, the forty, the snow and ice deficit is at about $45,000. We are working together with the financial management team to identify sources to cover that shortage so that we don't have to carry that into FY 18. So we're in the process right now, we're reviewing budget to actuals, making sure, we're checking with all the department heads, making sure that they have projected insufficient funds to get through the fiscal year. The only exception being that any unforeseen, you know, any unforeseen expenses, massive storms, that that would be, I've stated my preference that I want to minimize, if not eliminate, the possibility of requiring a reserve fund transfer in June. So far, things are going well and not going wood. We're not going to have any, anything unexpected or unforeseen. And to that point, we are, we typically, or David Bond typically will wait to get a final number on a streetlight budget. Every year, it seems, I think this is the third, at least the third year, we're short on that budget. He's identified the amount of money that we need and we're going to cover that during the special town meeting so that, again, we can hopefully minimize any need for a reserve fund transfer. So there's a short list of items and we're going through them. One other item that happened that occurred today, and this is sort of goes into the next agenda item with regard to town administrator's report, would be a potential, I know that we might have a shortfall because we did ask in our professional services, we asked our town auditor to participate with us on our call to standard imports today. And he did work with us on a number of, you know, on our strategy, our outlook, answering some specific questions that we did have. So that was something that we may need to request a transfer for. And I was in support of that. I just want to be, let you all be aware that that will likely show up on our list. But I believe that we have sufficient excess appropriations to cover that so that none of this will be an issue after May 2nd. So I will compile all of those items with what we need and where it's coming from. And I can distribute that on Friday after I've reviewed that list thoroughly and looked through the budget with the town accountant. So it should be a short list. There should be no surprises, anything on there. I think we've talked about at least once, twice, or more times in the course of our meetings. So I came, I plan to get that to the board on Friday and to the FinCom so that they're aware of that ahead of time. And that anybody can ask us questions on Friday in advance of our Tuesday meeting before the town, you know, before the joint meeting, before town meeting. So we're in good shape.
Can I have a perspective on the streetlight? I've spent too much time on it. It's in the order of $2,000, if I remember. Why don't we make it $2,300, make sure there's enough.
I have the number from the.
We'll have a tailing of 300 or something if it doesn't need it, if we need it, we have it.
I have the number from our tree warden and, I mean, a streetlight, I have the specific number.
Yes, I thought you were saying you were waiting for something from board.
No, 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 I have it, I just.
Oh, you have it? Oh.
Yeah, no, I have it.
I thought you said you were still waiting for him to tune it.
No.
Let's not tune it to the penny. If he's got it, great.
No, I think, it might be $2,600.
He's got it, he's got it. Okay, that's good.
Tree, oh, the trees. I think he identified a separate issue that might be a reserve fund transfer, but we're going to try to deal with it on Tuesday as well. Because it was unforeseen, I believe, as a tree warden he might be, I believe that David might be requesting a reserve fund transfer to cover tree damage that occurred because of all the storms. So he's doing that as a separate process because it was unforeseen. And so he, you might be seeing that, or it might be at the Tuesday meeting. So that's just another heads up. I think that was in the vicinity, maybe, I want to say six or $7,000. So anyway, if I see any more information, I'll share that with you on Friday as well.
We've talked about having the budget up online.
We are still working on that and I don't want to overcommit. My hope is that the worst case, we could get it up on Monday, but.
Kelly, the town meeting is on Tuesday.
We're not voting.
If we can't get our act together.
We have our act together. I resent that you would imply that we don't. We have our act together. And respectfully, we are trying to make sure, as you have cautioned me many times, that our numbers are correct and that we've checked them once and twice. We are doing that. We will not put information on the website that has not been thoroughly reviewed by our financial management team. And if there is an issue with that, please come and see me individually and I will clarify. And I will give everyone on this board an update on Friday morning as to what I anticipate our budget information to be that will go online.
Thank you.
Enough said on that subject, I think.
Aye, thank you.
Item number four is discussion of town hall summer hours. Discussion to change office hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day to the following. Open Mondays through Thursday, Mondays through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which is an extension by one hour on four days, and closed on Friday afternoons.
I think it's appropriate to wait on this until we have it reorganized. I know that people go, want to plan their Memorial Day weekend long or whatever, but I think since last year, this is discussed after town meeting. And at that time, I know that the two of us had concerns about it. I think it's appropriate to let the new board members weigh in on it. Member, whoever it happens to be. We know that Laura is not going to be, because she's not running. So there's at least one new person on the board at that point. But that's, I don't know that it's necessary for us to make the decision now. I think it's almost courtesy to us.
Any further discussion?
Is this one, was done last year?
Yes.
And then was there, was there any negative, significant negative feedback?
No, in fact, we got great feedback about it. And all of the department heads that don't have time to finish the quiet work while there's foot traffic actually appreciated the opportunity to come in on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday like we might do and be able to do this. And one advantage this year would be that we are going to be preparing for moving and packing and going into the new town hall. So it actually gives us another day without having foot traffic. And plus, I think the town is like a ghost town after Memorial Day anyway on Fridays.
There's several other things that make this a no-brainer almost, in my opinion. I've talked to a number of people in town hall and said Friday is a very low foot traffic day. Anyway. Anyway, all of our people say they're more productive by working for a full day Monday through Thursday rather than a half a day on Friday. So, and it worked well last year by everybody's comments, and I haven't heard anybody in the public say it's been an issue.
I did get some feedback, particularly what I was asking for, I got some feedback from some citizens saying they were disappointed it was not open and available. But that becomes a balance, whether that's justified or not, I mean, I'd love to be open on Saturday at some point or at seven o'clock at night or something for the citizens, but there's only two options to do. So, it's a trade-off, but to say, but in my case, I can't say that there have been no negatives, I have had negatives from residents that have scored us.
Just two quick clarifying points, first of all, even though we are closed on Friday, we're open an extra hour Monday through, Monday through Thursday, so that gives added availability from four PM to five PM.
Well, the workout, yeah, the same thing.
So, we're not losing, right?
Work areas.
The second thing is that it's not just so that we can plan our Memorial Day weekend, more importantly, I think it's so that with advanced planning, we can update our appropriate information, the website and our bills, so that people are aware that if we're going to be closed on Fridays, that we understand what the, you know, if there's any minor changes that maybe the treasurer needs to be aware of or that the town clerk needs to be aware of. So, it really just allows us a few period, or a couple of weeks to, you know, just to cross our Ts and dot our Is. So, that was one of the reasons why I want to bring this forward now, knowing that on May seventh, you'll have a brief meeting to reorganize, and that really only leaves the May twenty-first meeting, and I just didn't want to seem like I was just throwing it out on May twenty-first for something that would be implemented the following week. So, I did put thought into making sure that I got this to you in enough advanced notice so that you could make a thoughtful decision about it, so that, that's really why I brought it when it did.
Any other comment?
Is there a motion or is there a motion?
No.
We're discussing the change of hours.
Because I think the suggestion on the table is too necessary. We can do it together, or vote on it now, that's the discussion in town.
I move to set the office hours for the town hall from Memorial Day to Labor Day to be open Monday through Thursday, eight AM to five PM, and close on Friday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, I'm sure the employees will appreciate the advanced notice as well, appreciate it, thank you.
Well, that's part of what makes this somewhat attractive, is it makes it a little more pleasant for us to work.
That's right.
That should be part of our job. Do you have anything to report, town administrator's report?
Yes, I do.
Oh, goodie.
But it'll be short and sweet, we had, I think what we have, I would define as a very good call today with Standard and Poor. We had, even though he wasn't the primary advisor on the line, he was participating, it was the same advisor, his name is Christian, I can't recall his last name, but he was sort of participating in the call, they asked some very good questions, we had Tula, so we had a whole financial management team at the meeting, at the conference call, Tula is our principal assessor, Donner is our purchasing agent, we had Catherine Gabriel, Barbara, we had our town auditor, we had Lori Lombard, who's our financial advisor, myself. They asked some very good questions, they seemed to be, reading between the lines, very impressed with the progress that we are currently making, they seemed impressed by our reserves in terms of our free cash, we've reported that there is some development in the pipeline with regard to Perkins Row, well, not Perkins Row, the green, rolling green, is that?
Rolling green.
Rolling green. You know, it was just a very, it was a very good conversation, we got a lot of good feedback from them. What we hope to, we will definitely hear back from them by Friday, so we'll be sort of waiting by the phone, waiting for them to give their preliminary report. I'm not anticipating, it's been a short amount of time since our last review, so I'm not anticipating a bond upgrade, but what we really tried to do was to show them that we are, we are moving forward in a positive way to better, to help understand and to strengthen, I use the analogy of our town report this year, which is to strengthen our foundation, that we're working on a lot of programs and projects right now between our water system, our educational system in the new town hall, even just our investment, our five-year investment in our capital plan, that we are really making decisions now that will bring us well into the future and establish our standing as a go-to community. They talked about, you know, going to the fair, you know, you know, so it was a very, it was a very positive call, and ultimately, the numbers that they see in front of them will help them make their determination about our rating, will be going out to bid. And we talked about, very briefly about the water treatment program, project, but I just think that we gave a very good sense to them that we are really, oh, I know, the other item that they were very impressed at was the OPEB, our, our concentration, our focus on building the reserves, we reported to them about the four hundred thousand dollar Donnie Bristol grant. Not only the grant, but I talked about how, as an investment in the community, that Tops Field is a community that really, you know, thrives, its rural standing as a community is something that's really treasured by the community, was supported with the vote for the capital debt exclusion, and that, you know, fortunately with the four hundred thousand dollars coming through with the grant, that we are in a really great place to be able to go to this next bid and know that we are investing in our infrastructure and our capital. So, they seem very impressed with the work that we've been doing and the fact that we have the people we did around the table. And I also really talked about the partnership of, you know, the finance committee and their involvement in the development of capital and our, you know, financial policy guidelines. So, I just wanted to report to the board that I think it went very well and that hopefully by Friday, we'll have an indication of what the actual, you know, hopefully they'll, I'm sure, I'm sure that they will uphold our double A two rating, no doubt. The question that I had was clearly, if not now, then perhaps next year, what point, you know, based on that first discussion we had with them last, last October, if we were on the line of being upgraded, maybe we weren't, maybe, is this enough to push us up? So, I'm not holding my breath, but I need to say that I think that we have made a lot of progress and I think that they see that. So, you know, if not this time, then certainly by the next time, I think in October, we'll be going back and asking them for another rating. So, we have some really good, you know, some work ahead of us, a challenge ahead of us, but I think that we left a very good impression in their minds, and hopefully that will be evidenced on Friday when we get our bond rating. That's my report.
One of the men, one of the people at that meeting this morning was a guy named Hinkston.
Oh.
And he is our focal point of the auditors that handle the town's audit. He told me that you guys have a very good report card. He was particularly impressed with the fact that we're concentrating on things like reserve funds and stabilization funds. He mentioned specifically the finance committee and the work that they did increasing the donation or the addition to the OPEB fund by two hundred thousand, they increased that by two hundred. It went to three.
Increase by.
Yeah, increased by, it went to three hundred, and he said, and he said, there are not a lot of towns that are doing that. And I said, well, there's a lot of towns, maybe, that are sitting around waiting for the state to resolve that issue, and he said, it's never going to happen. So, he said, the towns have to do that on their own, and he said, the sooner you get started on that process, the better off you'll be, and he said, bond people, look at those kind of things, he said, that's the kind of stuff that they look at. He said, you guys will get a very good report card, and he said, in my opinion, you will be, you probably are one level below triple A rating. And that's good news. There are some people around that don't think that's important, but it is. Enough said on that subject, I think. Okay, approval of the minutes?
I have one quick item.
Yes, sir.
Can you personally agree how we'll, well, it's not specifically posted because there's no way the chairman could have anticipated it, and it'd be unnecessary.
No worries.
We just recently received an email from the resident property manager, and that's to do with downtown, and we're taking a liberty of paraphrasing it slightly.
Minutes of.
Yep, yep, yep.
Essentially, I think I'm fairly paraphrasing, they heard and some other folks were concerned that we didn't respond to certain things, but she notes that they only watched the broadcast until ten thirty. We went quite a bit beyond that, so, and they want to know about a response to Attorney Ragilewski's letter, which I absolutely discussed that.
You did.
And then about, I heard about this, that we received, they thankfully received letters from five realtors, they brokered realtors, and I've never seen them.
I did see them.
Dark times.
Yeah, and what, the realtor, I've seen one or two of them at least, and how did I see that? They were emailed to me probably as an attachment maybe to Gretchen's remarks, but they're concerned about what the downtown is doing to affect property values and their ability to sell houses.
So, it's okay, all right, I'm going to say definitely let some combination of Kelly and his office, which I think is you, reply to them as possible tomorrow, and to me have a one, let her know that she should step in.
Here's her memo.
Yeah, I have it right here.
I know you do, I just want to make a comment about that memo. She states that they were under the impression that we were going to read that memo, then anybody make a commitment to read that. She says here, it was our understanding based on the posted agenda of the Board of Selectmen for April twenty-third, under correspondence, that five letters from realtors would, were to be read discussing the adverse effects of the plaza.
On real estate, I.
That's what was the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm trying to go ahead of my, number one, I never got them, so I think we should, we should let them know that for better for worse, but that they were never received by the board, they never reached the board, that's the first thing that you want to know. The first thing I think should be that respectfully, the meeting went later than ten thirty, and the correspondence was at the end of the agenda. So, if she has, Dick sometimes says that she wants to go to the tape, she'll see that we did do that, that we did respond, we did discuss.
You did respond, but we didn't read.
Right, but we did discuss, you can say it was me, Mark, that I did, because I talked to Attorney Ragilewski myself, that I did exactly what I said, so that we did discuss his correspondence, we, somehow the five other letters didn't reach us, and then she requests that it be proven on the May seventh, but unless you guys overrule me and you say it was placed, I believe, I was glad that we requested it to be placed on the next, on the fourteenth, I think it is.
No, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, sorry, yes, that, and just trying, I don't need to micromanage or worry, but maybe clear that we did that, or it's not that we're just doing it now and we feel like we do it, but that the seventh is a reorganization meeting, that's the first objective, gentlemen.
You done?
Yes, sir.
I had a conversation with John Coulon today, and he told me that he's practically living at the shopping center, and he is meeting daily with Peter Flump, and Peter is making a bunch of changes per the allegations and the photographs that were presented here, and, and he said that he will continue to push Flump in that direction, but quite frankly, and I'm not defending Flump at all, but, but what he's doing is band-aid solutions to the, appear to be the problem. He is, in fact, working on replacing a crushed drainpipe in the parking lot that created that pump, okay? Because it wouldn't drain, he is fixing that, he's doing some roof support work that's rotted out, and he's doing some stuff back behind Daybreak Cafe that looks unhealthy. But he said, we'll, he said, we'll be on top of that and we'll stay on top of it to watch for Board of Health issues.
We had a meeting, I had called a meeting, John Selectman Spencer was there as well, it was with myself, Glenn, John Coulon, and I invited Cheryl Nutson from the Board of Health there as well, so it was a really good and productive meeting. One of the suggestions that John had made, and I thought it was very good, was that perhaps there's some way or mechanism by which I can be reporting back to the board to let the board know, but also the general public know, that this isn't something that we're ignoring or that we're not trying to address in some capacity. To find the right mechanism to communicate that to people is, is challenging because, I mean, what, what John had suggested is maybe I can work something into the town administrator's report, and the first thing that comes to mind is that's always at the end of the meeting, everybody wants to go home, last thing you want me to do is talk about, you know, the checklist of all the things that we've been working on. So, I'm open to suggestions, one of the thoughts that I had is maybe at least once a month, maybe doing a memo of update to the board that talks about, you know, some of the things that each of our individual departments are doing. A really positive thing that also came out of the meeting was Cheryl had done some research, there's a form, it's a nuisance complaint form, it was from another state, but she had said, oh, I did some research, I came up with this form, and it just looks like maybe this is one way that we can get people to, rather than to complain to each other or to make comments to each other or on Facebook, that maybe if we could provide people a tool by which they can put this stuff in writing and send it to us and we can follow up, that that might be another way to go about trying to deal with some of these issues, because right now, what we're sort of seeing is this proliferation of emails and Facebook posts, and yet, the people who have the authority, the legal authority to do anything about the, the matters, assuming they're legitimate, assuming that they aren't aware of them and can go out and look at them, they're not getting this information firsthand, so it's making it very difficult and challenging for us to address something that is a legitimate legal issue, that we have something to do, you know, that there's some legitimate legal way to address these issues. So, we're trying to find ways, and I thought the meeting was really helpful, what I think that I might do is just put together a memo for, and maybe we can put another, well, this is going to be on the agenda for the twenty-first, so that might be an appropriate time for me to perhaps to put together a summary memo that says, we've met, here are some ideas, here's what we want to do to move forward, and also just reassures people that we are doing everything in our limited capacity to try to address the situation.
Mark, I would ask you, and I don't want to put the, I don't want to put a load on your back, but you've got Ragilewski's case studies that he sent to you. Could you or would you be willing to scan that stuff and figure out if there might be some legal thing that we can do along that line? Because we keep telling everybody it's private property, we can't do any, and they're getting tired of hearing.
I've gotten more than scanned, I read them carefully.
Did you?
And what we have is a very different perspective from Mr., that Mr. Ragilewski has and that KB Law has, I guess have for the last two, three years, a little longer.
Oh, okay, yep, okay.
And I know, and I had this discussion directly with him, in a very professional communicative discussion.
So, you've already been there?
Yeah, I mean, just in paraphrasing, he, I don't, I think that's very, he's in support of taking a very aggressive approach. I believe that's not consistent with the advice we've received from town council, and I think town council has put more weight on the likelihood of success or the lack thereof, and offered, it's a recommendation to, to recommend whether or not taxpayer money should be invested in that type of litigation. I think that's, that's not an easy decision.
Well, and I hear, I hear a lot of people say, well, why don't we take the parking lot by eminent domain? Well, first of all, that's really going to cost some money, and second of all, I don't think it would be approved by the court, because we're not going to do anything else with it. We're going to take a parking lot and keep it as a parking lot, they're going to say, well, you know, they wouldn't approve that, but that's, that's the consensus.
And that's another expensive legal process.
That's what I hear, and that's another legal bill.
Another power, I'm pretty close to quoting myself, said to Attorney Ragilewski was that there's, there may be many with me, but there's no one in town that, you know, feels negatively against those barriers than I do. I mean, I may have hundreds of people right with me, but there's no one that, I don't know if I can use this word, I hate them, you know.
They're unsightly as hell, they're awful, no question.
But I have some difficulty with supporting a lot of taxpayer money at some of these processes that, and I'm not overstepping, I'm not a nuisance litigator by a stretch of limitation, but I, I don't see the likelihood of success. But I, I don't see the likelihood of success that Attorney Ragolewski is seeing. That doesn't mean that I'm right, you know, but, so he wants to come in, so that's why I think we.
Apparently Flump's answer to the barriers is, well, I'm going to take them out. But I'm going to replace them with some steel posts and some chains. So that the parking lot, the parking will still be gone, but he is of the opinion that it won't look as unsightly as the barriers.
Maybe it won't.
Maybe it won't.
This is a step in the right direction. Those barriers, as long as those there, just tells everyone.
So, you know, I share the, sure as others do, I share the frustration. But we've invested a couple of years in attempting to explore and facilitate a resolution and it didn't come to bear.
I, I knew Peter's father. I met with him two or three times. And he hated Topsfield. And he told us face to face, Board of Selectmen told us face to face, that he was never going to do anything to help down at Topsfield. I was hopeful, but when he died and Peter took over, that Peter would be more amenable to trying to do the right thing, if you will.
And while there haven't been any immediately visible actions of that effect, it hasn't been that long since the Helms of Flump passed away.
That's right.
And generally.
Six months, probably.
Yeah, but in my general experience, once you sue somebody, that burns the bridge. You know, I don't know how else to say it. Maybe in some cases, maybe not when I'm locked. So I just, you know, I think, I know people want action. But sometimes it's not prudent to immediately.
Well, we're being branded, we're being branded by a group that does, a do-nothing group as a result of this.
The other thing is not, not every action is governmental.
Right.
That's, no question.
You know, there may be private causes of action. Maybe people want to start a legal, I'm not suggesting, I'm just discussing, maybe citizens want to start a legal fund for private action for those people that feel they're privately aggrieved.
I'm also, you know, from the meeting that we had the other day, what I'm also hearing too is that there are a lot of tenants there that, while they say that they want the shopping plaza to look nicer, on the other hand, they're saying, but I don't want my rent to go up.
That's right.
So it's a double-edged sword. They want the cake, they want to eat it too. But if you think about, they're paying that rent. They have, they're writing out the checks to Mr. Flump. So they have a stake in this both ways. So I don't know that they decided what's in their best interest.
I am, I am told that Jim Dawson has said if it's not fixed in a year or a year and a half, he's out of it. And that's the only store down there that's worth it.
Well, I certainly haven't, I've, I've had a call, Mr. Flump called me after I had, you know, seen the flurry of activity and wanted him to be aware that we're getting more calls. And so I haven't given up on the hope that I can try to get, well, actually, my next, my next thought is that we can, we're about to apply for the complete streets application. What I'd like to do, rather than, I think, as long as we keep trying to villainize him as the enemy and where, you know, I'm trying to come and say, here's a project that's going to encompass the whole downtown. If we can get this grant for $400,000, you can be with us or not. But we're investing in the downtown and if you want to jump on the ship, this is what's going to be happening. We're going to be putting, you know, some, some money into the downtown if we can get this grant. And so being able to go and say, this is what we're going to do. What, by the way, can we do to get rid of those barriers? So that it at least, even if you don't want people to park there, it won't look like a construction zone? Or, I think you call it Beirut? It just looks so uninviting and I, and I've told him that. And I don't think that he disagrees with us, he just thinks that we might be overreacting. But every time I speak with him, I'm like, okay, what are we going to do to get those out of there? And so I haven't given up hope, but it's just not happening as quickly as I would like or anybody else. But I still will continue to press on that and, and with Memorial Day coming up, I'm really, what I heard from the meeting the other day that he said to John was, you know, by the end of the spring or the beginning of summer, you know, I want to do something. So I think I'm going to press on, press on him to, maybe Memorial Day would be a great time because the Memorial Day celebration's on the Monday, the twenty-eighth. You know, maybe if I, when I speak with him, I'll just say, wouldn't it be great if we could sort of kick off the summer with a nice memorial, opening up that lot and maybe getting some flower baskets with the flower, the garden club and seeing, you know, just offering something to, to move it forward and to talk to him about, we are not giving up on investing in that, in the, in the village, you know? If he succeeds, we all succeed if he can succeed. If, if those vendors are attractive and people will go there and spend their money, everybody's going to do better. So I haven't given up.
You would think he'd keep trying because half of the stores are empty.
I know. So anyway, that, that's my quick update, but for the twenty-first, if not sooner, I will get an update of the work that we have come up with. Glenn has also got some, you know, some, you know, some updates. He's been checking on the place as well. He's been trying to get in touch with Mr. Flump as well. So we're all trying in our, in our ways to whatever capacity we can to get some movement. And maybe with some sunlight and some warmth, we'll all have a new opportunity to make it a little bit nicer down there.
Good.
It's probably a little bit hard to remember because it's been a few years ago. One area of the parking lot is much better than it was because we had to put in a separate system. Not only does it look, the parking lot look better, but importantly, the units are properly surged with the new.
It's better, no question.
Because it was dangerous.
I'm not sure if Brian Woodland didn't pay for the paving over on that side.
Oh, because by the.
By the rail trail and the bicycle.
Where the easement is.
And that was supposed to be forms dealing, I think Brian Woodland paid for that.
I think.
I think that's what he did. But anyway, it's better.
The important thing is that we did make some small progress.
Take care of that or did you?
The second thing is that. Well, apparently, this is, I learned some Monday from, that he apparently has said maybe because of what you heard, that he does intend to replace the barriers with something else. That, that makes the idea of a nuisance.